All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our June 20, 2023 Board Meeting, 7 o'clock, a little after. Declaration of Enquorum, six members present, one absent. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We've all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That'll bring us to item C, recognitions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Horak. It may be summertime, but we have lots going on across the district with so many different programs. And tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Maria Sines and some of the students that she is serving. She coordinates our bilingual summer school program. And so you guys go ahead and come on up. Maria will introduce her students for our Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
Hello, thank you for joining us. So these are four of our students. Our program works with the youngest of our students throughout the district, which are pre-K entering kindergarten and entering first grade. And so I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
My name is Theo. And my name is Theo John.
My name is Mayrod McRobbie.
And this is second.
My name is Lorenzo Ramos.
Lorenzo, switch places. Come over here. There you go. All right. Say, will you please stand?
Will you please stand? I pledge allegiance to the Texas State of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and a reasonable, routine, and justice for all.
Say, remain standing. Say, remain standing.
Remain standing.
Texas flag.
Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Sorry, to the Texas.
To the Texas.
One state.
One state.
Under God.
Under God.
Okay. Say, a moment of silence, please.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you, may I please stand, uh, sit down?
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
We have some eggs. Oh, keep smiling.
from our bilingual summer school and enrichment summer school kids. So we do appreciate them sharing their talents with us here this evening. That'll bring us to item D, D1, Board Reports. Any Board Reports?
D, I see, met June 7. I would say it was a very quick and timely meeting, primarily met about title programs in ESSA planning.
All right. Any others? All right. Do we have superintendent update?
Thank you, Mr. Horak. As I mentioned in the introduction, we've got lots going on across the district this summer with our summer programs, whether it be summer day camp or enrichment, our ESL bilingual programs, accelerated instruction, ESY and sports camps. And so far, it's been a really great and smooth summer. And in our facilities that are not hosting these activities, we have lots of construction going on as well. A&amp;M Consolidated High School is in its second summer of a four-phase renovation, where they are currently working hard on that front office renovation, as well as doing some flooring on the second floor, additions to the restrooms in order to continue renovating those. And the auditorium, I don't know that you'll even recognize the next time you go there for a performance because it is receiving a complete facelift. Things are on track with Southwood Valley for Phase Two of the comprehensive renovations there that will complete the remainder of that campus, as well as at Pebble Creek this summer. Our natatorium at CSMS, as you may recall, is receiving quite a bit of work, not only in the pool area, but as well in the locker rooms. And so that is on schedule to be completed at the beginning of the next school year as well. Also, not to forget, our CTE Phase One, we had that great celebration for groundbreaking, and things are on schedule and moving right along there as well. Also, in the workshop, we talked a little bit about the 88th Legislative Session, although signee die in the regular session was on May 29. A lot has happened since then with the first special session. We know that there was just last week, a new committee formed to explore educational opportunity and enrichment, and we anticipate that we will learn more about their discussion and findings in August, and do anticipate additional special sessions. As we talked about in the workshop, there was $4 billion appropriated at the beginning of the session for public education, and unfortunately, none of that has come to fruition at this point. And there is a lot of discussion about property tax reform. In fact, there were 76 bills vetoed by the governor on Sunday. So we, with all that, do fully believe that this session is nowhere near over just yet, and remain hopeful that there will be some additional funds infused into public education. Despite not being in school for a few weeks, we actually had an incredible accomplishment for both our comprehensive high schools, A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School, both placed in the top 25 for Division 5A of the Lone Star Cup, which is an incredibly prestigious award that looks at a combination of performance and excellence in fine arts, as well as athletics and academic UIL. And so, very, very proud of the accomplishment with the Lone Star Cup. Moving on to upcoming events, we, of course, named lone finalist for superintendent on July 12, and would anticipate especially called meeting in early July to finalize that process. We are going to be closed as a district on July 4 in observance of Independence Day. And later this summer, just to note, we will have all of our teachers return on August 8 and host our kickoff event at Central Church on August 9. Last month, we also talked briefly about a joint meeting with the City of College Station. Just earlier today, I received some additional possible dates for that, and so I'll be sharing that with you all via transmittal. So hopefully, we can find a time to do that in late August or early September. And that is what I have for the superintendent update.
All right. That'll bring us to item D2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Related to School Board Meeting Schedule for the 2023-24 School Year. Dr. Perry.
So it is that time of the year where we need to ensure that we have our dates set for the next school year. And so with more information, Mr. Chuck Glonawinkle.
Thank you, Dr. Perry, Mr. Horak, members of the board. Traditionally, College Station ISD has held its regular workshops and meetings on the third Tuesday of each month. That is the proposal before you this evening as well for the 23-24 School Year, beginning in July. There are two exceptions in November and December due to the Thanksgiving holiday being the third Tuesday, as well as winter break being the third Tuesday in December. So those meetings will be held on the second Tuesday. It is our recommendation to adopt the meeting calendar as the third Tuesday in each month, with the exceptions for November and December of 2023. I'll answer any questions or take any comments.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
But I have a motion by Mr. Hall, second by Ms. Nolan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Glonawinkle. That'll bring us to item E, Hearing of Citizens. Nothing tonight. Bring us to item F, Consent Agenda. And those items are: Item G, H1, J6, J7, J8, J9 through J15, and K2.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mr. Hall, second by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Brings us to item I1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of Authorizing District Administration to Submit an Application to the Texas Education Agency for Participation in the Optional Flexible School Day Program at College View High School Accelerated Academy in 2023-24. Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. Last month at the May workshop, we spent some time reviewing the Optional Flexible School Day Program, or OFSDP, and how that might be leveraged at College View High School, specifically at the Accelerated Academy. We talked about how flexible school day options might further improve graduation rates for students because it gives that flexibility for students to meet other obligations, such as working, in addition to going to school. We have had incredible success with the program as is, but we know that there are students that really would benefit from a more flexible school day. If approved, the administration would submit an application to the Texas Education Agency that detailed how we would take attendance and what that program would specifically entail. It would require consent from parents to participate in the shortened day, and we would offer two four-hour sessions. It is recommended that the trustees authorize administration to go ahead and submit that application to TEI so that we can initiate that process for the upcoming school year.
Move to approve. Move to approve. We have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, there we go. We have a motion by Mr. Decker, second by Ms. McAdams. Any further discussion, comments?
You said that there would be two different sessions, so they could either do a morning session or an afternoon session?
That is the plan.
Awesome, super flexible.
Yes.
Love it. Thank you.
Yeah, just saying, like we said last month, it's an exciting opportunity for some of the students who need this, so glad to support it.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. That'll bring us to item I2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of New Administrator Contracts for Assistant Principal at College Hills Elementary and Assistant Director of Career and Technology Education. Dr. Perry.
All right. So we have, as you mentioned, Mr. Horak, two positions. We'll begin with College Hills Elementary, and we are recommending Ms. Lindsay Ditmar for that particular position. Ms. Ditmar is currently the Reading Interventionist at Rock Prairie Elementary, where she has served for the last six years. She also has experience across almost every grade level at the elementary level. She's recently a graduate of our AP fellow cohort, and we are excited to recommend Lindsay to join the leadership team at College Hills Elementary. The next recommendation for Assistant Director for Career Technology Education is a new position. As you all well know, our programs in CTE have grown immensely over the last several years, and we project will continue to do so, especially with new options at our CTE Center, potentially even adding additional programs like cosmetology. And so we are thrilled to recommend Ms. Sheridan Clink-Scales for this particular position. She is currently serving at College Station High School as an ag science teacher, but she has also worked at A&amp;M Consolidated High School in the past. She holds a wealth of information about CTE programs, having been the department chair since 2018, and serving at the state level for a number of organizations. So it is our recommendation that new administrative contracts be issued to both Lindsay Ditmar and Sheridan Clink-Scales.
I'm to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nolan, second by Mr. Hall. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0, and congratulations to you both.
Sheridan is, yeah. Ms. Ditmar was unable to join us tonight, but Sheridan is here. Ms. Clink-Scales, if you'll stand and just be recognized, thank you for being here. Congratulations.
All right. That will bring us to item J1, Consider Approval of the Employee Stipend Schedule for the 2023-24 Fiscal Year. Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. As discussed in the workshop portion of the meeting earlier this evening, we typically include this information regarding an updated stipend schedule with the total compensation package. However, this year is a little bit different because not only are we delaying that total compensation package just a little bit longer while we continue to monitor what is happening in Austin, but we've done considerable work on revising the stipend package for the 23-24 School Year. Not only did we evaluate what other districts and market comparisons are looking like, but we really wanted to make sure that the review was comprehensive. And with more information, Ms. Amy Dross.
Thank you, Dr. Perry, Mr. Horak, members of the board. So as mentioned in the workshop, the stipend schedule is certainly a crucial part of our compensation plan, which is why we are bringing it separately and earlier so that we can start communicating. But it includes, among other stipends, the special education stipends that you previously approved on June 12. As well as another pretty major change is in our extracurricular and co-curricular, eliminating the extra days that we had included as part of the stipend, and just combining it to only have a flat stipend amount. This will simplify the process and for both implementation as well as communication. Also helps us, you know, when we're looking at the total amount for equitable between the different groups as well as other districts. So there are a few other changes. Fine Arts is another one that had the days combined, but the other one are very minor changes. So the stipend schedule is there and attached, and we'd like to recommend that it be approved as presented.
I motion approve as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Decker. Any further comments or questions?
Just, I appreciate you going through the effort to, you know, to study this because it is an important piece of our, of the compensation package, and to make sure that they are, you know, fair, equitable for the folks that are putting in the extra time above and beyond outside of the, the school day, so.
And Dr. Perry, just to clarify, this could, you talked about this is addressing the market demand, so this can be adjusted on an annual basis if we need to?
Absolutely.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. That'll bring us to item J2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Authorizing the District to Provide Notification of Cancellation to Tasby Benefits Cooperative and the Texas Municipal League for Employee Benefits Effective August 31, 2023. Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. As discussed in the workshop, we've also put considerable effort into recommendations regarding healthcare for the coming year. And with more information regarding this and the next several related items is Ms. Dross.
Thank you. So in April of 2022, the Board of Trustees authorized the district to enter into agreement with both Tasby Benefits Cooperative, as well as Texas Municipal League, or TML, for our healthcare, for our employees and their dependents, if they so choose. That was effective September 1. As described, that was all done through an RFP process, where we selected the best value for the district, as well as our employees, as we looked at the total benefit package and the employees and what their needs might be. Unfortunately, part of that contract called for a maximum rate increase of 9.9%, which was not honored. As a result, we did once again go out for an RFP, which is kind of further down in our agenda. But one of the requirements, if we make a change, is that we must give a 30-day notice of cancellation to both of these entities, Tasby Benefits Cooperative as well as TML. So tonight, we're asking for you to authorize the district to provide that cancellation as required that will allow us to move forward on the next two agenda items that are included.
Move to accept the motion.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Ms. Nolan. Any further discussion or comments?
Ms. Dross, if I remember correctly, because it was a while ago when we switched to TML, in spite of the bait and switch, it was still the best decision because there was going to be, I think, a neighborhood 20% increase if we'd stay with the previous plan.
Well, you have to remember, those increases at TRS Active Care were proposing, then, that was around that percentage at that time. And then the state infused a lot of ESAR funds into TRS Active Care temporarily, for as long as those funds might exist, to help mitigate that. And they also made a number of other changes to TRS Active Care. So last year, there may have been some districts or some regions, they went to regional areas for pricing, may have experienced some of those higher rates, but some of them were lower because they did not have the same rate across the entire state of Texas. They're now regionalized. But we did not have that information at the time that we.
I think you made the right call, and I appreciate y'all staying on top of it, and then minimizing the disruption to the employees.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Carry, motion carries 6-0. I think you're going to stay up there a while.
I'm going to be up here for a while.
Item J3, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval Authorizing the District to Engage Directly with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for the Provision of Employee Healthcare Benefits Beginning on September 1, 2023. Dr. Perry.
Well, with the notice of cancellation, we certainly want to ensure there's no lapse in coverage, and so Ms. Dross will provide more information on our next steps.
Yes. So as mentioned, we once again went out for a request for proposal. We did have two complete proposals for a fully insured product, one being from TML and the other from Blue Cross Blue Shield directly. So after analysis, it was determined that for College Station to move to contract or engage with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas directly was the most advantageous. It minimized the increase compared to what was being proposed, also has minimal disruption for our employees, meaning we're going to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, keep those plans that we currently had, Blue Cross Blue Shield proposed, and provide that passive enrollment for our employees. So not everyone has to re-enroll. So all of those reasons combined are ones that, why the committee that reviewed that, which included Dr. Perry, myself, Mr. Simak, and Gallagher Consultants, recommended that we contract or engage with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. So tonight, we're asking for you to, again, authorize the district to engage and sign all required documents with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas that would be effective September 1, 2023.
I motion approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, a second by Mr. Hall. Do we have any further discussion or comments? I think we got a lot of that in the workshop, so, very informative, so appreciate that. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Brings us to item J4, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding Employee Healthcare Premiums for 2023-24 Fiscal Year. Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. With the selection of Blue Cross Blue Shield as our direct provider, we shared recommendations in the workshop regarding the impact to increase of both district and employee contributions. And with more information, Ms. Dross.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. So the last piece related to healthcare for next year, with us engaging with Blue Cross Blue Shield directly, the attachment here shows you the premiums per plan that were proposed within Blue Cross Blue Shield. It reflects about an 11% increase from what we had last year. So then our goal was to start looking at those, each of those plans, and deciding on the distribution of that premium between CSISD and the employee. So in looking at that, what we came up with was a cost to College Station ISD of about $850,000, but increased the district's side of that premium by 11.95%. That would be 11.95% of what College Station ISD was already paying. And about 9.9% on average percent for our employees. Some are a little higher, and some are a little lower, depending on the coverage and the dependents that they selected. So some of them are the, seem like a higher percentage. It's very low dollar amount because it's employee-only, and the dollar amount was only about $2.50 a month increase. So that premium schedule is attached, and we ask for your approval tonight. These would be effective September 1 for our employees.
Move to accept as presented.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Dr. Payne. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Brings us to item J5. It's amazing how all these flow right back after each other, like is planned. Consider Approval of an Order Authorizing Redemption of Outstanding Bonds of the College Station Independent School District. Dr. Perry.
With more information, Ms. Amy Dross.
So we get to change the topic this time. So we're going to talk about authorizing the district, the superintendent or CFO, to redeem outstanding bonds in next fiscal year. So with the assistance of our financial advisor, who's Hilltop Securities, we monitor our bonds with regard to when they are eligible to refund or refinance at a lower interest rate, and which ones might be viable for that and have some savings, but also look at which bonds are callable. And we could, as a district, pay them off early, saving both the district and our taxpayers' interest, also helping us with future bonds and giving us capacity. So tonight, what we're asking for is that you, as a board, authorize us to, to look at those bonds, and under our current debt rate of 26.3 cents, if there are some that are viable, to pay off early, saving both the district and the taxpayers' interest earnings, that we are able to do that. The dollar amount would depend on the actual tax collections at that current tax rate. So we're not determining that tonight, just giving us authorization to do that and factor it in.
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second. But I do have a question, too, so.
All right. No problem. Motion by Ms. Nolan, second by Ms. McAdams. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. You kind of alluded to it, just to make, understand why we, if we, on one hand, talking about a new bond with going out and taking in a lot more debt, why would we think about spending, paying off some of the debt that we have?
Sure.
Just maybe a little bit more on how that could.
So we looked at that graph in workshop that showed that we'd have some capacity coming up in a few years. It would actually, if we could pay some off earlier, it would increase that capacity for that future bond, either have some a little bit earlier than we thought, or it'd be larger, depending on which issues the financial advisor determined would be beneficial. So it does that, and it also saves overall in the interest that's being paid. So it's twofold. I mean, you know, what we'd do is be only looking at paying off those that are eligible, no fees, and higher interest rates.
And so even though we'd be taking on more debt, we wouldn't be paying on that future debt. debt for another, probably a year or plus more.
Correct. So if the bond is called and our voters, we're so fortunate to have them approve it, the earliest that that would affect any taxes would be in 2024. So these would be 2023.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. That will jump us all the way to K1. Consider authorizing the district to enter into final negotiations on CSP number 23-015 with CR Systems for roof repairs and replacements at Forest Ridge Elementary in the amount not to exceed $1,495,438, utilizing $169,488 from the 2021 bond funds and $1,325,950 from the general fund. Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. Unfortunately, over the last several years, our communities experienced a number of weather events, whether it be ice or hail, that has caused substantial damage specifically to Forest Ridge Elementary. And with more information, Ms. Amy Dross will discuss this particular item.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. So Mr. Hall would normally do these, and he's on vacation, so I hope I do justice by him tonight. But you all know, as Dr. Perry mentioned, a hailstorm occurred in April of 2021. We actually had seven buildings that we went out RFP for either repair or replacement of those roofs during that time. Well, since then, this past fall, when VLK was doing facility assessments, Forest Ridge came to light that appeared to have some extensive hail damage. So we brought in Armco, our roofing consultant and engineer assigned for these projects, and began looking at it, and sure enough, then they worked with our insurance adjuster, and it was determined that this damage is extensive and was a result of that particular hailstorm. So insurance has agreed to add that to the claim, which is good for us because we've already met our deductible. So when we first did the bid, this particular roof was not included in the scope of work. So we had to go out for RFP again instead of just bringing forth a change order. So we did. We had, the proposals were received on February 24th, and we had seven vendors that responded. They were evaluated by Mr. Hall and his team at facilities as well as Armco, and it was determined that CR Systems, who actually was the same vendor that was awarded in the first round, as the best value and the low proposer. The proposal included light kind and quality as well as all code requirements. We also asked for an alternate, pricing on an alternate that would include sprayed foam polyurethane system that would protect against water intrusion should we have future hail damage there. So I think we all remember some of the nightmares of the water intrusion from the storms before. So this has been a proven product. Armco has put it at Texas A&amp;M on many buildings that did not experience the type of issues that we had in this last hailstorm. So with the alternate, price is $1,495,438. So it's estimated with the non-recoverable depreciation and all that, our out-of-pocket cost would be $429,539. Because this alternate is an upgrade that we feel is a good investment in our facilities, we're proposing that the cost of that upgrade, $169,466, be funded from our 2021 bond funds in those deferred maintenance category, and then the balance out of the general fund as an extraordinary item.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. Decker. Any further comments or questions? All I would say is when it's done, make sure that property insurer knows of the roof that's on Forest Ridge, just see if there's a discount.
I will.
Just saying.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us to item L. L1, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.0821 and 551.129, consultation with school attorney concerning case styled student versus College Station ISD, docket number 266-SE-0523, and related matters and deliberation concerning a public school student wherein personally identifiable information will necessarily be revealed. And then L2, the board will meet in executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, dismissal of a public officer or employee. Executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters. Close meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. I encourage you to hang around because it's 100-plus degrees outside, so why would you want to go out in that? But if you choose to leave, thank y'all for being here. Enjoy the rest of your summer, and we'll see y'all next month. We will come back to item MM1, consider and take possible action in a matter styled student versus College Station ISD, docket number 266-SE-0523.
I move to accept the recommendation of the district's administration and the school district's attorney to direct the district's administration and the school district's attorney to proceed as discussed in its closed session in matter style student versus College Station ISD, docket number 266-SE-0523.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall, second by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0, and that will bring us to our adjournment.